Okay. There you go. Mrs. Congress.
That's Mrs. Congress is here.
You ready?
Okay.
Congress speaking to all. That's already on that one. Um. The question with the. Yeah. I couldn't leave it.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
What did you say so?
I was.
I went on a high.
I was.
We were.
You know why?
I'm sharing the pledge with my.
You know why I was so busy laughing and groaning to get up to say my pledge and I got distracted.
Okay, roll call. We're all in. Very good. Okay, the only thing on the agenda tonight is to have a brunch table. And it sounds like by some of the texts, everybody worried about the ticket sale. I've got twelve sold. I don't know how many we've got altogether.
Eight more.
I said I want four.
Is it six?
Six.
Six?
Yeah.
I mean, I got six. I think I have five or six, but it's my certain down to my personal view.
And I think, uh, Chris, she sold her ten. Um. And then she's got two more. We're selling a text for them. That would just give her that. And, um, who else has tickets? I was happy calling for them. Do they have tickets?
No, she said we could, um, get ice cream from them now.
Oh, okay. She wants to sell tickets on.
Cassie sold some too, I gave.
Yeah, and then we got six total. So I heard I were trying to figure it out today. Before, like when I closed today, because I sold two this afternoon in class, so.
They, they, uh. Well, she was more than a.
No.
Unless you gave us two envelopes.
I just gave you a ten. I thought she said she might. She might have two less sold and that would be the ball. Jane needs tickets though, right?
Oh, maybe she's a queen.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, Jane's taken four, like.
Well, you know, like the Sam opened nine to five, so if anyone. Needs any, just kind of.
I should run my line.
You know, someone always there, so. And I think your mother has, you know, five or four more.
So how many you got for a total of something? Were you just barging that down?
No, I think she was.
I need forty-twoish. So four, five. Four, six, seven. Forty-nine. And that's how usually it is this time, literally first the week before, but I'm not having a little consult.
Hmm.
If you pull it out this year.
Um. What'd you guys do? Well, you can knock the price down a little bit. The rest of it will play, you know.
It's not fair if everyone.
Yeah, no, I agree.
People complaining about the price.
Yeah, a little bit. Yeah, but hey.
So do you want to dinner? Where you going?
Probably too, because it's only pork. So I think a lot of times the menu, I think a lot of times the menu has a lot to do with it. You know, maybe as far as next year or something.
Yeah, we'll learn that. I mean, I mean, no matter what we sell for tickets, even if we lose money or whatever, we're still gonna get that money for. Squash and stuff, so.
Yeah, I mean, this is what we're doing, so.
Yeah.
Yes. And we've done beef. Like twice so far, so. You know, I thought it was only so much you can go there. You gotta try and take a break.
Yeah.
Trying to do spaghetti meatballs and burger.
I mean, you can do that, right? But it's nice to support other.
That's what I mean, support other farms and other things. That's the whole idea.
You know?
It is what it is.
Yeah.
Well, yeah, but you have to go to restaurant people. You don't wanna get four hundred and ten for all you ask.
No, that's.
And I need another one.
When are you, when are you going?
Thursday.
Okay, so by that time we should have a.
That's why I'm creating our waiting till like, you know, till the very. I was gonna go today and I said.
We'll go to the new list accordingly.
Yeah, we lost, Michael lost the list. She said, she told me she took a picture.
Yeah, well, she lied.
She better take a picture, because that was the only copy I had.
Yeah, she will have it. She forgot to take a picture. That's why I didn't revise it anyway.
I thought she was.
We're not.
Did you drop the revising in? Did you drop it on?
We did.
I think I saw it on the stand.
Was it around?
We're looking.
It went for you. Went for us. Where it was on.
I wanted a careful place.
It was over me.
It was.
You guys.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay.
She had an idea also, just to put it out there. As far as the squash goes, she was thinking, what if we take the honey nuts?
Mm-hmm.
And just cut them in half? And cuts, and do that, put one of them on the plate.
Yes.
With the pork roast. This way there's no peel and just cut it in half. You wash, you cut.
Yeah.
And. Scoop out the stuff, make a little brown sugar or maple syrup, dab with maple syrup or something, there are butter and. And I think that would look nice on the plate too. To have a half squash.
What kind of squash?
Honey nut.
Or a little.
Or a little baby button.
Oh, okay. Yeah, that's great.
And do that. That's I, she said, and I thought that was a good idea. All right, good, okay. And that's gonna be the easiest thing. The only thing is. So she thinks possibly seventy-five will fit in the collection oven.
Mm-hmm.
If all the pork will fit into two other ovens, it's not an issue. We don't really wanna cook the honey nut if you're gonna roast it. Maybe you do. You don't wanna, probably don't wanna cook it ahead of time, because you don't wanna.
No, that would cook it the day before.
So you just cook it that day, which is. I'm not having to cook probably right after twelve. A little after, and you, I know, so it's.
Yeah.
I just don't think I wanna cook. We're half still fit in one.
Yep.
Well, if it's only seventy-five, and your mom was right with seventy-five, that she thought was there, we'll be fine. So you think work out. It's probably good that we got what we have, because we don't have. You know, we don't have the people to do all this, so I mean, things work out.
Yeah.
Things work out. And we still have fifty plates up there from last year. It's in these. I think she counted, she told me. I'm not pretty sure she counted them. Yes, recently? Mm-hmm. I think when she was up there cleaning the other night. Fifty plates, but you wanna get matching for everything.
Yeah.
Matching-ish. I know what time they were. They were the round scallopy ones. So that's the entree plate then? Mm, and then I got the smaller ones to match. I'll check with her again, or I can even look up there and see for sure what's left. So that will, so that's good, because then that's more we don't have, we don't have to buy.
Mm-hmm.
Now, are you guys going on Friday night also?
I'll be there Friday night at Virginia Range.
Oh, you're going to.
I'll be there Friday night. They probably cutting the squash, but.
Yeah, I hope you don't know that.
Yeah.
Come on. What time are you doing that?
You tell me.
I.
What time's for three girls? Oh, yeah, I'd rather do it in the morning.
Yeah, I thought you were talking about ten.
Ten. Perfect.
And it works better than mine, I thought.
Will the, uh, junior range help set up?
Well, it depends on how many. How late, that's kind of. I gave them a couple rags to dust and then.
Yep.
We set up.
She got a whole hall this morning.
Oh, she cleaned the hall this morning the next. Still a good job. Someone supporting, that's good, because we're also supporting a local person and family.
My daughter's.
How could you? Oh, I thought you was your mom then.
Your mom and I were in the kitchen.
Yes.
But my community came this morning and did that.
Okay. That's a helping of a person too. Um, now, she's talking about as far as the tomatoes, so. She's taking this, cut the whole tomato, and then we could just. I could get a set of cheese again like we did last year.
Well, it's like, we did a cleaning thing.
That was Chris, we did that.
So if you mentioned now, if you did a set of cheese, was it a set of cheese?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Cause I remember getting a lot, because you were trying to figure it out, and I remember getting it now. So we don't have, we're not gonna do like salad greens, we're gonna do just tomatoes? Well, like, but then, that's the other thing though. Sometimes the salad greens look a little nice on there. I don't know. That's the thing, I thought, oh, get some spinach greens. And some base, but that's where you figure that out. You'll have plenty of tomatoes?
Yeah, she said, yeah, she says so.
Yeah, I don't know what's been picking, so.
Yeah, I saw it this afternoon before she went to market. She picked this morning, so I'm sure.
And she said, like, said, you take one of them almost a tomato plate. Or even just slice it. So tomato last year should be a tomato this year? I mean, solo? That's what I mean. You might wanna put something on it. Put some greens and then. Yeah. Put some tomato. Yeah. You can put a.
And it looks a little nice, like her and I were saying, it looks a little nicer.
Put the greens, you got. You got like a base.
Contrast, yeah.
Yeah, alright. Maybe some spinach greens or some spinach, which would be nice, something like that. Right, all of that. So maybe feta, or you just, you'll figure it out.
I would say that.
Feta is, it's like sprinkled with cheese. You're gonna need a good balsamic vinegar at the. Yeah, you, uh.
Yeah. Nice vertical.
Mm-hmm.
Nice sprinkle.
Yep, and then out, yep. So that's good. The bread should be ready. We just need the maple syrup to mix with the. What are we getting at? Do we already get some of that, or we haven't? No, we haven't. I was gonna, I'll get some, but I don't have to, you know, somebody. Oh, no, that's perfect. Sounds good. And with the bread. And the butter, I mean. I got, I got some butter. Yep, and then the entree.
I'm picking up the pork, um, sometime tomorrow. That's what I'm working, I don't know when you want to start frosting it. If it should go in the freezers tomorrow, and then maybe tend it on Thursday.
You could probably put it in the.
I would think you could.
Freeze tomorrow.
I would say, cause then it'll be thawed out completely Thursday night, and then Friday, at any point, you can do whatever your seasonings and what.
So we had talked about doing Barbara's Salisbury recipe.
Mm-hmm.
Which is the herbs from the herb farm.
Mm-hmm.
And like a juice, apple juicer or something like that in there. Which I'm okay doing. Already will get it started. I would be seasoning it the night before.
Yep.
I'm saying that would be.
I put it right in the pan, have it all seasoned. And it just has to go in the oven. The only thing is. Like, I used to cook at sixty pounds of pork. You wanna cook it on time, you don't wanna, like, you don't wanna over dry. You don't wanna dry it all. So do I, it, it's not a big deal, but would you rather do like a barbecue, which is more forgettable? I am not, I, I don't have a barbecue recipe that I use, but if you're good with the.
I think it would be fine.
Do you have enough wood in there? That work, I don't know. If it falls apart, falls apart, we can insert a file of our. It would still be tender, oh, you can slice it.
I think it looks, to me, I'd rather have my meat come all whole in the pot, and I know it's nicer tender, it's juicy and good.
So I just not like, you know, I did check at the herb shop, they don't get that mix.
Alright, so you have, I had a recipe.
So I've been.
I have.
I've been, uh. Olive oil, soy sauce, honey, brie, mustard, brown sugar, parsley, and garlic. And you make it into a marinade, and it's like.
That's not really that.
It's not good.
It's like, it makes it like a sweet pork.
Yeah.
Not like super sweet, but like it's got more of like a savory than a.
Yep.
More sweet than savory is what I wanna say. But I love to eat guys.
I think that's okay.
Mm-hmm. So then, what do I, I mean, I have plenty. Oh, we go get some from that honey guide. So you guys have plenty too?
We're just standing, that's fine.
And that would be.
Actually, I've been, instead of brown sugar, I use a little bit of maple syrup, so.
I think that's perfect.
I did half brown sugar, half maple syrup.
That's good to me.
That sounds perfect, and we can use maple syrup quite a bit of it.
And then it's marinated, and then it's like, you just, and I grilled it, and it came out fine, and I've done it, like, smoked up the pork chops like that, and it came out nice, so.
So you just, is it, you do it Friday night, is it gonna be enough for marinade, or would you rather do it like Saturday?
It's fine, cause I usually start it in the morning and cook it at night, so if you do it Friday, it's a Saturday, it should be fine.
And then the potatoes, you're gonna just wash, you put them in the salt water?
Yep, so you want small potatoes?
Or they can be quarter halves? Yes. I mean, they can have skins on them though, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
What are they claiming?
Yep.
Usually if you have skins on, usually the small ones are better, I think. They have, they have, they have even like different colored ones.
Yeah, so it'll be pretty.
Yes, I did it for my mother's birthday this year.
Oh, nice. So just that, we'll put them in the fridge and then pull them out. Look them.
Where you, where you got them?
Potatoes.
Yeah, where? Where you getting them?
Probably depot.
Oh, okay. Yeah.
I don't like being. So the potatoes, do you know where anybody else adds potatoes or not here?
Farm, farm, but I don't know how it's all hanging out. Yeah, just let me know before Thursday, we'll do it.
Thank you. Get back to me on that.
So we want to pour it right into the shit there.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
This way fry, it will be already the marinade. And then. So it really shouldn't be too much together. Potatoes, are we gonna put, we're gonna drain them.
Do you have anything else called you a little pumpkin?
Do you think you could look for smaller layers?
One pumpkin.
Or, and then we can just throw it in that.
I came here, your neighbor.
I know they're not my mashed potatoes.
There's a head of them in the back of my truck.
Yeah.
Moisture.
There's no, why did I even put like? Marinade.
If anybody does.
Something to like that. Yeah, I mean, I use parchment in my crock pot sometimes, just because.
Yeah, so I could pick, if I don't see the line, I'll pick up parchment paper or something like that, and after this, we're cleaning up potatoes and then things we put in our four more.
And then the squash. So you guys just, you have plenty of squash? You're good to do, get the squash ready?
Yeah, because it's cut in half and scoop in it.
Mm-hmm.
Wash it, rinse it.
So Friday morning, we're doing squash and potatoes?
Squash and potatoes.
And the pork will fall in.
Or I can do that Friday night, whatever it was.
I'll just mix it up, I can mix it up before I end.
Oh, that would be great.
And then, I don't know.
Very cool. I don't care, I'll be there Friday night.
We could even probably put it right on the pork pan, from the rice fire, yeah. Yeah, we can just, we'll do, we'll do that till it's already in the pan.
And then you'll get the salad just red, red washed or whatever, so Saturday will.
I would do the tomatoes on Saturday.
Yes, yeah.
You don't wanna do that on the day before.
So what do you do?
You want to trim it off.
Yeah, they're never, yeah.
No, that's, that's right.
Tomato's on it, I mean, Christine and I were slicing them last year, and it didn't take us that long even slicing them. That like, happened just before noon time.
You have to know, it's pretty small, be there, so.
If you can have a small slice.
What time are you starting stuff on Saturday?
So we'll have to go backwards with the recipe, so it's ready for five, so if it's ready for.
So it's just how much?
Fifteen, right?
So that, it's.
Cause you gotta.
That recipe doesn't have a cook time to it.
Okay.
It is, how long does it take for it?
Yeah.
I would do it probably like, I would do it three fifty. Maybe do more like a three twenty-five.
Yes.
So if you figure out how long.
It also would take like.
Already twenty-five, that, and then work backwards, in my poundage.
Three twenty-five, it says, of course, we gotta watch this, sometimes you gotta check here.
Mm-hmm, well, yeah.
Yeah, maybe it won't get anything.
I'm just gonna stay close.
Yeah, I just.
Right, then you can pull it out and just tend it, which is fine, you just don't wanna hold for too long. If we're starting at five, if it's done by five or a few minutes before, that would be fine, that would be great, because it's gonna take a few minutes to set up the bread.
It wouldn't be. Yeah, chicken, yeah. I don't know, you're sitting there, and it's going to be half an hour longer than that.
Yeah. Right, it's right with the weight.
Hi guys.
And now for your.
Today, my.
Cause often that's kind of our entertainment.
Yeah, but you said the link, are you sure that link will work out on the range?
The what?
The link you sent to me?
I know you.
So if it does, it's a YouTube, it's a YouTube video of the farm throughout the seasons, which are, right, like, it looks really light and see the whole thing, but they don't.
It's only in the fifteen minutes watch.
It's really good. Um, anyway, it says eighteen to twenty-three minutes, what poundage?
It usually figures twenty minutes a pound.
How big are they?
I'm telling you tomorrow. So you figure that's what, three pounds an hour? I forget what she, she told me, but I forgot. So you figured three pounds an hour, and I'm sure they're gonna be different pieces.
Mm-hmm.
And so you just put like sizes in the same thing.
Yeah. It'll be fine. It'll be good. And, and you know what, if we have fifty or sixty, I'd say load them up, you know?
Right off.
Well, yeah, I mean, guess Jack will feed you.
Okay.
So you have, we'll, we'll a couple slices. Yeah. We'll put, we'll figure it all out. Just say, you know, you know, these people that bought tickets anyway, and they, we have those that come every year, why not take care of them?
Mm-hmm.
I agree. And they'll go, wow, you know.
So the, um, apple crisp?
Yeah, let's help with that.
The Tasha said she'll make two apples, that she made two bits, he said her and Katie will each make one. I'll make two, or you and Ashley each will make one?
Yep.
Is there a specific recipe?
Yeah, I was wondering, you got, uh, you know, Rosa, what's the.
The range one?
Where's that one at?
You don't have it.
No.
I remember I'll send it to you.
Send it tonight, alright, thanks.
Says two, four, six, eight, ten, which would be a hundred and twenty, but whatever, we need all ten, and I don't know that everybody's gonna make the same size, just a three pound bag of apples, or about, you could be apples, you got three. They have the apples already.
Yeah, she said, hey, make ten, and then, hey, rack the one off.
Or maybe we could sell them.
Yep.
If you have them in disposable pans, and if you don't have them in disposable pans.
Oh, it's going in a disposable pan.
One thirty-five.
And we're not to wash the disposable pan.
Can I make a motion that we pay a hundred and thirty-five to clean the range off?
Oh, yes.
I don't know if you can do that.
So just.
Yeah, I know.
Sorry.
Yeah.
We'll do that next time.
Oh, yeah.
Next week?
Good luck.
So even because we're using the.
Take that back.
It's, it's just in this.
Yeah.
Yeah, but that, yes.
Really just discussion.
Um.
What are you gonna go for the apples? I'm thinking of the apples on birds tonight. That was on my list. And, oh, after. What are we doing for drinks? Just putting some lemonade and water over there?
Coffee?
We call it five day?
I think we're talking about ready, five day, so Saturday's gonna get close then.
How much butter do you think you're gonna need?
We're gonna need butter for the bread, butter for the, for, uh, potatoes, and butter for the squash, and probably a lot for potatoes, right? Isn't that the best way to eat them?
Oh, you're not good.
And you cook the squash with some butter, and then you also have butter to serve, right?
Yeah, but you won't need a lot of water, and then we'll.
Sorry.
Extremely.
Yeah. It has.
It's gonna miss.
Well, it would be like.
Not even a tablespoon.
Yeah.
No, not a tablespoon, just like.
So how, yeah?
Yeah, especially if you're putting something else in it.
All the pans are coming in as well.
Are you gonna need brown sugar? So you're gonna need brown sugar.
I'm sorry, do a pack. I know. Some of gray, you can just. Alright, so you need brown sugar.
Alright. Twenty-five pound bag, fifty?
Well, you get it for the squash and the pork, right? Probably not fifty, that much.
The pork is very, very minimal when it comes to that. We don't need fifty.
And I only got a forty-five pound bag last time, I went, you know, that stuff, you don't want that last.
This, there's like a couple pounds, I have to look at the rest in for sure, this is a couple pounds, and it only needed a tablespoon, so.
And we want to.
You're splitting it with. And you're splitting it with maple syrup too, so. Goodly.
I like this maple syrup idea.
Hmm.
I wanted that right from the beginning, and then it was something different. It's kind of like, this is like a maple kind of, yeah. It's kind of just maple.
Tell me what.
Chris was gonna give some items to Rappel, did she get it, did she get any of them too, or?
She's gonna drop them off here, tell me.
Yes.
I would make mom.
Happy, yes.
Pollard.
Spread happiness.
Pollard and her daughter, what's your daughter's name?
Not Paul.
Oh, well, then that's a sexual, anything they do, I guess, that's right.
They always do correct.
They can do whatever they want.
So practical for Saturday.
Yes.
What time would you like people to show?
So Bree will be there to throw the stuff in the oven. She can put that, as long as she knows what time to do it, and I assume you might wanna baste it periodically, it's a big piece of meat. If she has a timer, she can do that, and I'll be there. I'm hoping we'll be there by one. I'm hoping I'll be there by one, I was just not sure then. As far as prep on Saturday besides that, I mean, if somebody wants to come, what, three o'clock, do tomatoes, and throw things together? Does that sound like a, cause it was just starting serving at five, you should be ready before five?
Oh, yeah, cause people are always at the door at four thirty. I'm a bit long creative, so.
Well, let's let them in. I'm like, you don't open till fly, they can stand out there.
My Rappel tickets.
Until the strawberry's awful, and they're all there like three thirty, in a parking lot.
I'll be there at aftermarket, so as soon as it's three thirty, I.
And Paul and Tasha will be there to help serve. Not serve, clean up and stuff, whatever, whatever needed, yeah.
They do a good job of it.
Yeah, they do.
They do.
They ask them to do something in their, but.
The best they have for servers.
Brianna, it's fake table now?
Nope.
May, Robert?
Why can't I get my mom and then I get it out?
That's what I was trying to figure out, times.
Sure. Yeah, get them fed and get them out.
And your mom.
Are we doing takeout here?
Yeah.
Okay.
I don't like. It's like a takeout.
It creates such a cluster.
Really?
If we ask you.
That's what we're doing, done something, yeah, we don't.
Yeah, but it creates a cluster.
Yeah.
I mean, if someone has their.
Ticket and they come in and they can't say, they've already gone on your ticket, I'd say, sure, go ahead.
Wait to open it up, and then, you know, when we know.
I would install tickets, telling people that we have to take out.
Right now, that's going to be a, the best.
Yeah.
But a lot last year, when I would take out.
Yes, unfortunately.
The only good thing about them though, is they, they're going. That's everyone. It's less cleanup, it's less cleanup. Do we ever have to take out the hairs of the bench? How old am I getting my ear done?
Yeah, I do, I take these, uh, part of this down.
And I just put some rattle wrap over that plate, and it's not.
There you go.
So applesauce is set, anything else you need to whip up?
That covers everything.
Yeah. Thank her again for doing that.
My.
Right?
And the pumpkin, bread sauce, huh?
Yeah, it's all made, it's in the freezer. Yes, gotta make maple butter, definitely done by Saturday.
Why do they have to come out?
You want them out of the freezer Friday while we're.
Yeah, I know, right?
Yeah, Friday morning.
Yeah, we can take them out. So you're good with the list of what you need, you got all this there, that's it, that, you're good. You guys are good.
So the kids, just cut them up, throw them in a can of water with salt, and throw them in the, in the sauce, throw it right in the fridge. All that salt.
So if you do, I don't know, you got, maybe five hours, maybe, if it's been five hours, you probably add. Or something? Yeah, not quite a quarter, but quite there. We'll cook them drinking.
Are we cooking them too?
No.
Okay.
We'll cook them Saturday. Probably not a quarter, no. I don't know, sprinkle it in there.
Oh, that's all I need to know. We just boil it, or you just boil it?
Boil it, yeah.
And then just.
Starting with melted butter.
Yeah.
Maybe a pat on top too.
Should we get a, like.
Some herbs and leaves.
We can get some parsley?
Parsley.
Yeah, put a little something on it.
We need parsley to be, um, marinate anyways, so. Right, parsley.
Or you could even smash them, if you wanted to smash them, but I think it's healthy.
Be a nice stir around, sometimes they get a little. I wouldn't smash, but like, do it a little like, burn the part.
Okay, there's a lot of just cooked with butter.
Oh, I need, tell them you use that emble for that, with the onion mix.
With potatoes? Oh, never had that one.
It's been in my almond cookbook, so you know it's real healthy, like hundred pounds of butter, you know?
So if it tastes good, it probably isn't.
Oh, my God, you sold her, you continue.
So you have more tickets, everybody else says you have, if you have more tickets to sell, if you sell more tickets, you'll let everybody, or at least Robin, know. So you don't sell more tickets?
I'm gonna die.
And try to find this list.
Her and I worked it today, I didn't, I should check underneath the desk.
I thought she put it in the drawer.
I don't know, now, she didn't put it in the drawer.
I thought she.
I told her. It's underneath the desk.
I told the, the lid blew in.
I saw it, I saw it. I saw it. Did I read it? No, but I saw it.
That's right, cause I need, I need to get the silver, and I need to go, it's not where I'm, it's down there in the list.
I'll try to find it tomorrow.
Let's, we can change anywhere, you get a person, brown sugar.
Yeah, I'll try to find it tomorrow, then.
That'd be great.
Cause her list is on there too.
I had two, yeah.
Yeah, cause she's like, tell me I need another one too.
I told them, I gave them two.
There's someone shooting.
Oh, shoot the messenger. And she said, I'll make a picture for Robin. Yes, she did, she goes, I'm gonna take a picture. And she said, she sent that to me, she said, I'm like.
For the future, for the future of our friends.
I'm sure if I had to, I'd think back and think of.
It's, it's, it's not that easy, you know, I mean, we, it's basically.
It is, so we have somewhere, plates and everything.
Mm-hmm.
Oh, we put anything on these tables?
So Bree will have hours, I guess, that C Y supplement, if we need supplement, we're supposed to let her know.
Well, those, those. With those, those eggplants.
Come on, they're so cute. So last year we had little birds too, little monkeys.
I mean, see those eggplants?
No.
They look like a pumpkin.
We're out there.
Yeah, they call pumpkin on the six, she's like, yeah, they're eggplants, so we're out there picking, and she goes, you go, oh, I see, I forget, they're ornamental. So then you pick them this way, there, I said, those are eggplants. Now they're about this big. Pretty bright, bright orange. Yeah, they, they're pretty, they are pretty.
They look pretty, I hate them, sure.
Or in an arrangement or something.
Yeah. She already took some and picked them back, didn't she?
Are they drying well?
I want you to back to get them.
Did you?
I would want that.
Oh, I was gonna make a. Are we allowed to talk about that, or?
No.
Okay.
Oh, my gosh.
When somebody asks you for a pumpkin, for a pumpkin.
Yeah, I got one, one, come on.
That we can't say, cause we're poor kids. It's in Jack's possession.
You getting it to the school?
Oh, oh.
Well, I guess we'll talk about that at the next meeting too.
Okay.
God forbid we mention.
I think it's.
Seven.
Oh, they were flying.
Oh, sorry, audience of citizens, we can't qualify you tonight, because we're not allowed. So, if you would like to be here for our next.